Good evening and welcome to the 6:00 PM Special City Council Meeting of June 10th. Please note that all council members are present. At this time, I'll turn the time over to Vice Chair Hyer to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
All right, if you're able, then repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a moment of silence with me. Thank you. Are there any acknowledgements?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the good work of the Ogden Downtown Alliance this past weekend. If their goal of the car show was to fill downtown, they accomplished that. Holy cow. We were standing, there was just a river of people up and down 25th. It was amazing. Kim turned to me at one point and said, "This like, we're standing in Times Square." It was that many people. The downtown was full, it was thriving, it was just a great, a great evening all the way around in downtown Ogden. Thanks, ODA.
Yeah, awesome.
And then they turned around and had it packed again less than 12 hours later for Farmer's Market.
For Farmer's Market, yeah.
So, great job.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recognize both of you, and we both had the privilege of attending a PATH program, which is a pathway to citizenship to, for those that aren't citizens that are on, have, on the path to doing that, and all of those people have graduated from our PATH program, which is sponsored generously in our community, and just really exciting to be there and appreciate your part of the presentation. It was a fun night to see their enthusiasm and their excitement about the potential of being U.S. citizens.
Yeah, and Diana Lopez did a great job that night, you know, or I don't, I'm sure she did it all the other nights too, but, yeah, so thank you for continuing to do that and, and thank you for continuing to have that in our budget, and it's, it's important right now, so, thanks. All right, any other acknowledgements? Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for the acknowledgement of Diana, she's a treasure for the city, so is the program, the PATH program. We can certainly support more participants if we had more donors and support for the program, which we'd love to have there. I think that's, that's something that only in Ogden, you know, but I wanted to recognize Chief Matthew for his years of service and his announcement today that he's going to be retiring from service as our fire chief. He's had an incredible career, a man of absolute integrity and innovation. He has driven leadership at the, at the fire department that is second to none, and he's well-respected across the state and frankly, the country. He's a highly revered leader in, in fire service, and it's hard to see a guy like that go, but we love him deeply and support him fully in everything that he's done for Ogden, but also in what he looks forward to doing with his family, his grandkids, and in retirement, and it's going to be an adjustment for him, I'm sure, but I just want to honor the man and the legacy that he leaves behind for the city and to have, for me to give my commitment to have a full nationwide recruitment to replace him, and that I've asked him to stay on until we have him replaced and, so that we can have continuity in leadership and for our fire department.
Great.
Scared to have another meeting, we keep losing firemen every time we have a meeting.
All right. All right, let's move on then. We have a public hearing for the upcoming, or the fiscal year's 2021-2025 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Action Plan Amendments. Jeremy.
Well, everyone, grateful to be here to talk to you today about our five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan. Just want to clarify, this is not the one that was approved just recently, we're actually going back and looking at the con plan and annual action plan from 2020 to 25, so it's the one we previously have done, the, the new one that's adopted will begin July 1st, but what we're talking about today is an amendment regarding some, so these are the two things we're mentioning here, sorry, so there's the con plan and then the amendment to, to the annual action plan, which was the first year of that con plan period. Specifically, we, just to remind you why we are doing this, anytime we make an amendment to this, to the con plan, it requires citizen participation and outreach, and because if we're making a change and it's not in the con plan, you can't fund it, you can't use HUD funds on it, so we're having to go back and adjust this even for things that are, may seem simple. So what we're talking about specifically is funds that were received, they're called CDBGCV funds, so these are Community Development Block Grant, CVs, is short for the coronavirus. This was a one-time grant that was given to help alleviate, prepare, respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. That was given in that first fiscal year of the, of the previous con plan. When this was granted to the city, the original objective was to support businesses by providing financial assistance, and that was all to prepare for, prevent, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. That was the eligible use that was selected. Since that time, not all those funds have been spent, and there's, there's a substantial amount that was still eligible to be used as we have gotten farther and farther away from the COVID-19 pandemic. The assistance businesses needed was not as much in demand, and so after consulting with our, our HUD representatives, they recommended that we shift these funds to another use. The proposed new eligible objective that we're now looking at is to move that to improve the safety and appearance of neighborhoods through public improvements and, which would prepare for a future pandemic, and that would be an eligible use as well. So this, the bottom line with this is the most proposed changes are to reallocate grant funds specifically from the micro enterprise and small business loans to public improvements, and that would also modify the goals for that fiscal year. This is the way the budget breaks down, the original CDBGCV budget had $426,197 going towards micro enterprise loans, another $426,197,000 to small business loans, and then $94,710 towards administration costs, for a total of $947,104. The proposed new budget would be the $380,904 for micro enterprise loans that was spent, there would be no more funds going towards the small business loans, that money would be shifted $500,000 to public improvements, and then $66,200 towards administration costs And so this is the schedule of where we've been and where we go from here. There was, we first reviewed this with the CAC on April 30th, there was a city council work session May 6th, about a month ago, since then, there's been a 30-day public comment period, which ended on June 7th. We're here tonight at the public hearing, June 10th, and then if approved, this would be submitted to HUD tomorrow. So happy to answer any questions at this time.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I do have one question, Jeremy, and I apologize, I forgot to ask this in the work session when we were talking about that meeting with the small business owners. They did mention they were wondering, and when that money's reallocated, could a business apply to do things to their exterior, or is it more for more public spaces?
Yeah, so the, the thing with these funds is they do have to relate back to in preparation to or in result of COVID-19 or a future pandemic, so things, there's only a limited amount of things that you can actually do with those funds that check that box, so facade improvements would be hard to justify and that type of thing. Most of this would be geared towards, some of the eligible uses are like trail improvements, help people have connectivity to outdoor parks, expanding sidewalks where needed, repairing sidewalks that help people get access, and ADA ramps, that type of thing that are eligible uses that HUD has defined as being, use those funds, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
All right, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that would like to speak in regards to just those items, please come forward and state your name, and you have three, I almost said three seconds, three minutes. Go, start.
Good evening, my name's Teresa Bramwell. This is my first hearing of this program. I own a commercial property at 25th and Monroe that was, well, in a home on a commercial lot that was burned by homeless people in 2021. And then my neighbor's property, Topper Bakery, which is also a business, was burned in 2021. Commercial property, both of us in a lot of need, and I've never heard of this program. But it appears that it was loans, which is probably something that a person like me would not apply for, also probably a person like Topper Bakery would not apply. You know, we own our properties free and clear, so to take out a new loan on that property is not something that we, we would be inclined to do. But it appeared from what I saw that this is being transferred from being a loan to individuals or businesses, to then just being money that's given from the federal government to Ogden City. Am I understanding that correctly? It's not a loan that Ogden City is taking out from the federal government for those funds? And then the second question I have is if those funds could be used for improvements in the park strips? Like, I know that I have a really messy park strip that's basically used by my neighbors for their snow removal, and it's basically just a blacktop that's probably 50 years old and has cracks and lots of grass that's growing up through it, so is that something that could be, could be improved with this money? I also have a tree that's been removed, that was a 100-year-old tree in my park strip that has grass on it, so is that something that can be improved with this money? Because I think 25th and Monroe needs a lot of attention. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, just, we probably need the answers to those, so.
You want to keep the public hearing open for that?
I don't think so.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second. We have a motion by Vice Chair Hyer, second by Councilmember Ritchie to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Jeremy, if you could answer some of those questions, I'll try to, or you are listening, I'm assuming, so the loan, is it a loan, is it?
So that, that is correct, this, this was geared towards businesses to take loans out to help their business, and the prerequisite is that they had to be struggling and identify that they were struggling because of COVID, right? So it had to, had something had to happen where their business was impacted, we found that this, there were a lot of, a lot of sources out there that were helping businesses, so the reason this wasn't super competitive is because it was a loan. There were other resources that businesses preferred to use, and where it was used a little bit, it wasn't, it, it was hard money to spend because it had to meet all the CDBG requirements, which are a lot, and it also had that, that COVID restrictions on top of it, so that was the reason it's there, so is that, that answers the question about the loan, is that clear?
Yeah, there, it's pretty specific around.
Yeah, and then as far as what it can be used for in the future, I mean, it really always has to be tied back to that preparing for a future pandemic, right? So we, they give you the list, HUD identifies a list of what it can be, so they specifically look at sidewalk improvements, at trail improvements, they're talking about access to help communities get access to open space, parks, that type of thing, so it would be, it's very specific and would say, you can't just do any sidewalk, it has to incorporate things like social distancing, right, it had to be at least six feet wide and meet some of those requirements, so you're, you can't get away from the, the preparing for a future pandemic on this. Okay? Any other questions on that? Second?
I mean, that answers, I didn't, if Teresa has more questions, maybe we can just talk to Jeremy, see if any of that would fit into those. All right. I'm ready for a motion.
Chair, I would make a motion then that we adopt proposed Resolution 2025-11.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Vice Chair Hyer, to adopt the proposed Resolution 2025-11. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Councilmember Chirberka.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer.
Aye.
Chair White. Aye, that passes. All right, well, next on our agenda is public comments. I'm just gonna make sure that we've got two other meetings, one's the redevelopment agency meeting, and the other one's the building, municipal building authority, neither one of those will have public comments, so this is the only time for public comment tonight. This is an opportunity to address the council or regarding concerns of any, or any ideas. Please, if you have questions, please come up, state your name, you have three minutes.
Hi, Debra Darrington, Ogden residence, resident, as you know. My concern today is with our housing in a real general scope, and I'm going to throw a few ideas out there and concerns. One concern that I do have right now is the apartment that we have just a couple of doors down that used to be Waterfall Canyon, and first giving accolades to those who run Waterfall Canyon, the most immaculate properties in Ogden, they just really have taken great pride, and I found when I first moved to Ogden, I could point out a Waterfall Canyon property just by driving by it, I didn't need any signage to know that's where it was. My concern in a broad spectrum is the property that is two doors to the north of me was for sale, and I had the opportunity to buy it, however, because of other things that I had gone through the past couple of years with red tape and just what seemed to be a bureaucracy that didn't make any sense to me, I came back from my developing projects in upstate New York and was pretty much ready to just pull out of Ogden, so I didn't even look at the property, and then I'm kicking myself in hindsight because it was a great opportunity to purchase not only a great investment, but I find myself to be a better landlord than what I'm finding there. One of the gentlemen that worked for me, the people who own that building now, also own the building that he lives in, and so firsthand, he said that for over two years, he has been trying to get the HVAC system, which has never worked, fixed in his house, he said there are no background checks that are done, and I won't go into that story any further because of lack of time, but my concern is that we have a lot of properties here in Ogden that have been purchased by people who are not residents, and so they don't see the problem, they don't care about the problem, and those of us who live in the city and try to make worthwhile, meaningful, impactful investments in the area to provide affordable housing and go through the good landlord program and try to better the community that we live in are struggling. What I've found is the, when I try to pull a permit, sometimes I run into a lot of red tape that's unnecessary, that doesn't resolve the issue, and from what I've found from the gentleman that works for me, the others don't even bother to do repairs, so they're not pulling permits, they're not going through the hassle of that. My last 20 seconds I'm going to use in one of the concerns that I have with are affordable homes that could be purchased. Many of those have been bought up by out-of-state investors, they've been turned into low-income housing, and so those people that would want to come into this area, purchase those homes and live in this area are not able to, so I don't know if we're able to put, give me three seconds, I don't know if we are able to put implications legally that people need to go through a good landlord program or a background check or something, but we've got to get some sort of grasp on our community and its citizens. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Teresa Bramwell, and I, my comment today is also about housing in Ogden, and I second her comments that there is a lot of red tape in Ogden and a lot of things, hoops that regular people like me and this lady right here have to jump through that, that other people, big developers get a free pass on. So I, what I wanted to discuss today, oh, first of all, before I do that, I want to say I had a really good time in Ogden last weekend, I went to the, the historic auto show on 25th Street, and the day before that, I went to the show at the Egyptian about the history of Ogden that was very interesting, and I had a really great weekend in the city of Ogden. But what I want to talk about today, because while I was at the auto show, I saw in somebody's cart that they were pushing that they had some, some paraphernalia from, promotional paraphernalia from 25th and Quincy, which is less than a block away from my property. It looks great, it's brick, looks like a nice property. I went to the website to see about the rentals, because they're advertising for rentals in there, and I also came to the meetings when that property was originally being developed. And what I remember from those meetings was that that was supposed to be at 80% AMI, which are tenants that are paying their own way, they have to qualify, they have to have a job, they need to qualify to pay their own rent, that none of their rent is being paid by the government, which is great for my neighborhood, woo-hoo, let's bring in some functional people, that would be perfect, I love it if it's at 80% AMI, but that's not what it is. So immediately, before we even put one person in there, it's at 60% AMI. The rents, no matter what size of a two-bedroom unit, you can have an 800-square-foot unit or a 1,050-square-foot penthouse, they're all exactly the same price, I think it was $1,888 per month, and every unit can have two pets. There are 176 units in that apartment, that means that there can be 352 dogs on 25th and Quincy. There's never been one dog on that property before, it used to be wheelwright lumber, and there was never a dog there, so now we're going to have 352 dogs, we're going to, and it just doesn't make sense how it's been laid out, and then the one-bedroom units, I think, are about $1,300 a month. And my concern is, in my last 20 seconds, that nobody's going to want to rent that property at those prices, the developer will be in a situation where they're going broke because they have no tenants, and they're immediately going to make that a Section 8 property, and we're going to have 360, 52 Section 8 people and 352 dogs without one blade of grass. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Thanks, Teresa.
Hello. My name's Holly. This is my friend Tracy. We are some of those Section 8 people. We don't appreciate those comments. We're functional. We just haven't had some struggles in our life. Right now, our biggest struggle is the lantern house. It is filthy, it is infested with bugs. We have chose to start sleeping on the street instead of going there at night because it is so bad. They treat everybody bad. They throw their things away. We can't afford to keep buying new clothes and stuff because they're throwing ours away. We have to carry them everywhere with us. How do we do that? Now they're saying we cannot be on the property all day long as if they're going for meals. There's old people there with walkers that can't hardly walk. There's a lady there with an eight-year-old autistic brother that can't hardly walk. And they want us off the property. This isn't right. We need to do something about this. Anything to add?
Still have two more minutes.
She has seizures, and we were roommates up in a program room where I could help with her seizures at night. And they're not letting us have that program room anymore because we took some contraceptive up there, a little snack. And it's not right. The new person that is taking over there, she is out to hurt us instead of help us. Our caseworker told me personally that it's their job to build us up. And they're bringing us down. We are not gonna succeed. Something needs to be done about the lantern house.
Because of the fact that I have seizures, I was told that nobody there can help me. I'm on the floor shaking, nobody can touch me, nobody can help me. I've got Holly, and I have my fiance. Okay? When I'm in a seizure, I don't know what's going on. Sometimes I come out of them, sometimes I don't know where I'm at, or what, I just, I try to run. The fact that nobody can touch me and nobody can help me after a seizure, I think is ridiculous. Then I come to find out that my friends can help me when I have a seizure. It's management that doesn't want anybody to touch me. You know, it's ridiculous. I think it's insane. And she's right, the way they treat people there, it's ridiculous. It really is.
It's terrible.
She, when it comes to people having to sleep on the streets because they don't want to get bit by bedbugs, that, it's ridiculous. It is. Something needs to be done about it.
I was told by a very reliable source that they had a work order in to take care of the bug problem down there. It's not just bedbugs. They've got scabies, lice, and stuff. But that, that work order was canceled. Why was that canceled? Are we not important enough to take care of the bug problem so we're not getting eaten alive? It's bad.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Norrie Jordan. I'm an Ogden resident.
Hold on. Norrie, just a minute.
I'm sorry.
No, it's just, we have to do a microphone for people online.
Hello. My name is Norrie Jordan. I'm also here about the lantern house. I stopped by that last night. The girl that thinks she's in charge is throwing their insulin away and their belongings. So I think it's time to shut them down. If they cannot find empathy, it's horrible. I actually had to stay there for four months. I was treated really wrong. So they are legally required to have a safe for medicine. What they do, they throw everyone's medicine together in this drawer. It's actually a federal offense. So there's also been drug use on the property, violence in front of children. I'm sorry. It frustrates me. So I'm not sure if you guys can do anything about the treatment of the vulnerable people. I would appreciate a lot of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Norrie.
Have a good day.
Any other comments? Looks like there's no one online. Well, let us follow up real quick. We usually go through the list, so. Deborah, I don't know if there is any part of the good landlord program that we can, you know, help or limit people from, out-of-state people from, you know, purchasing homes. But I, I'm not sure of any of that, and I don't know enough about the good landlord program to know. But do you know Mara or Mayor?
Yeah, I've got, I've got some answers if you want.
Okay. Yeah, if you wanna, we just need to address the.
Yeah. So I was gonna tell Deborah that your remarks strike at the heart of our housing policy and approach. We spent our entire legislative session working on options and alternatives because we are a city that is overwhelmingly in corporate ownership. And that is, that is really destabilizing our city and our community. It's taking opportunity away from people, for families to have ownership opportunities, to build wealth, to build a future, to have stability, et cetera. And so your, your comments are 100% aligned with my, my, and our team's observations. And the, the issue of, of having legal requirements to change that are built into the Utah constitution through tax code. And so it's a huge uphill burden that we weren't able to get over. But we did propose a program that we are gonna be piloting on behalf of the state. And the state legislature did use some enabling language to make $10 million of loan funds available to us to use to run the pilot for the, the state. We're not the only city, but we are the primary, what we consider to be, legacy city, where we have a lot of housing stock in our city that is already meets the definition of a first-time home. Just small bungalow-style, you know, two, one, two, three-bedroom homes that are really good for entry. They were built in a time of tremendous need and in response to, you know, soldiers returning from war, et cetera. And so they come in phases and periods, and, and we're in, we find ourselves in a similar crisis of need. The challenge we're having is that they're in that private corporate ownership for rental. And we are gonna be proposing a program that would, that would go out for bid to partner with a private entity to purchase homes. Need to restrict them, stabilize them, need to restrict them and put them back on the market for ownership opportunities as they become available. It's really hard to work within the market forces and to find a way to synchronize that. And that's what our team's working on. We've been reaching out to anybody and everybody with input and expertise and ideas, of which if you have any, we're open to it. But we, we will be the city that tests that model because we've gotta change the mix from corporate ownership to family ownership to further stabilize our community. To get to the question of the red tape and also for, for Teresa, that, I'm not gonna deny it. There have been challenges there. And just, just this morning and frankly every day, we're dealing with our, our efforts to undo that, a lot of that. We've got our generational plan for the general plan underway. We've got a tandem zoning ordinance and development code that's being completely rewritten. I am yet to find another city or mayor that I've spoken with that's been willing to do all three of those all at once. Every mayor I talked to that says we're nuts to do it, but there's a need for that. And our second-floor team is diving into and making a million different changes to, to ease the process on their end. Some of that requires reconsification, to find redundant code, to find things that are no longer necessary, to. We've been interviewing users of our system and gathering their input to find out where are they finding struggles and challenges with, with interacting with us, and then putting remedies in place and then testing them back with them again. We've got a whole, whole bunch of people that have really been helpful in that regard, too. Our staff has been pretty abundant in offering options for, for resolutions, too. So a lot of that work is underway to reduce the red tape so that we can get a lot more efficient doing business for Ogden City. When we're ready to unveil a lot of those changes, just this morning, we had a meeting with our directors. We got an update from Christian, who's overseen a lot of our second-floor efforts. And I pressed him for a timeline on when we could put out a communication package for some of the changes that we're putting in place. So that's a big effort underway in the background that just wanted to assure you we're working hard on. It's a big priority for me, has been since I started. The, um, did you already start answering the Lytech question, Chair?
We haven't, you know, I know that 25th and Quincy is, is Lytech.
Yeah. I, I don't remember it, I don't remember the discussion around 80%. I do remember the discussion around, you know, Lytech and, and how that works. But I just had a discussion today where someone said the new 60, is it 60 or 65% AMI? That's the, that's now because of the cost of living? That's teachers, firefighters, police officers, public employees? That's the kind of people that are taking up residence in these homes, that are needing the assistance through the Lytech program. Things have changed dramatically on the price to get into housing, as you're fully aware. But I, I don't anticipate a lot of vacancy in that housing. There's so much demand. That's the, that's what we continue to hear, especially for seniors. And you think that is targeted and built specifically for seniors has even higher demand? There's more and more need. If not for projects like that, we would be dealing with a crisis in our community. But I am very mindful of the balance of how much and of what type. Getting back to Deborah's comment around ownership and corporate ownership, we have to have all types of ownership or of housing, including a lantern house and a shelter that provides the services that we need. I wanted to say that nobody needs to apologize for sharing their, their experience with us. I want to reinforce that we don't, we don't own the shelter and we don't run the shelter, but we do have a strong partnership there and influence. And we've been working really closely with the lantern house to, to help with our grant funding, to fill the vacancies and voids that are happening through the philanthropic community. Revenues are down, they're shorthanded, we're having a hard time keeping up with the demands and the cleanups, et cetera. And so temporary shutdowns are happening, and we're trying to step in with more funding to help fill those gaps. Tomorrow, we'll be submitting our application to the state for our homeless mitigation fund grant. Each year, we've included additional funding to help with the staffing, to help with the cleaning, to help keep the doors open. And we're working on some short-term resolutions, too, to make sure that we can open the doors as fast as possible. And that's, we're urging on that side every day. We're also gonna be, we've heard really good input from our medical advocate. We're the first, again, of anybody that we're aware of that has done that. That was a brainchild of, kinda started and spawned from our police department, but also from Chief Matthew and discussions with Deputy Chief Slater. And we've put a homeless medic, medical advocate in the home. And she is not enough. One is not enough, is what we've heard loud and clear. So we'll be proposing another one as well, in addition to a mobile clinic, like an ambulance slash clinic, a place where our medical advocates can give services within that setting that are private and clean and reliable. And all the work that we do there, we feel like we can make sure that we're not burdening our local hospitals and emergency rooms with services that we feel like we can get ahead of and help people with in, in real time. So we're hearing the feedback that you're sharing today, and those are some of the answers we're putting into place. We hope there'll be immediate relief to get doors back opened up and get the place cleaned up. And we're also working toward long-term relief to have grant funds that provide stable services and support. So we're using our influence the best we can to get those doors open and to provide as much help as we can.
Great. And do we still have somebody sitting on the lantern house?
Correct. Yeah, Mayor is. Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yeah. Councilmember Chirberka's on the lantern house board and.
Yeah, you are, right?
And Chief Administrative Officer, Mayor Brown, is on the local homeless council, coordinating council on behalf of, of the administration.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Comments from the mayor, other than?
None at this time. Thanks.
Thanks. Comments from councilmembers?
I have a quick comment. Thank you. I just wanna say how much I appreciate the administration doing that with those mitigation funds and all those efforts there, because it is a crisis, as you know. And I, I really appreciate these folks for coming that have experienced living at the lantern house. And I'll definitely take your concerns back. There's not much I can do as one board member. There might be, you know, legal things that people are trying to follow or different kinds of rules, but I'll definitely take your comments back because I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Hayer, seconded by Councilmember Myers to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'm gonna oppose one time, just so you know.
And just to, just to, I know, I don't even know why I say that. Better be.
Yeah.
But maybe not. All right?
Need to make your hammer.
I know. A Fonz kick or something. Control all.
For that dinner on Thanksgiving or whatever.
Blame it on AI.
The lady of the week. Approached me and then two or three.
All right. All right. Good afternoon, good evening, and welcome to the redevelopment agency of June 10, 2025. Please note that all board members are present. With that, we have a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Janine Miller-Smith.
Thank you, councilmembers, sorry, board members. I'm here to just present briefly the, the redevelopment agency for fiscal year 2026. Just a little bit of background on the redevelopment agency. It was created in 1969. It was, took a special election vote to do that. All, as you know, board members are actually serving as councilmembers as well. The mayor serves as the executive director. Since 1969, the law has changed several times. And as a result, we have different names for different redevelopment areas. So they started out as redevelopment areas, then they were urban renewal areas, then they're community development areas. And now they're community reinvestment areas and economic development areas. So these are the redevelopment areas that are currently functioning. You can see those. So we have some redevelopment areas, we have some urban renewal, community development, community reinvestment. We have all of them. There were two that expired in 2024, Lincoln and Fairmount. And so there won't be any additional tax increment revenue coming from them. The, you'll notice that the 25th Street redevelopment area is not on here. That has also expired, although the administration is using that to pay off some loans for another area. And so it does still have a budget that's included in this, in this fiscal year 26 budget. This is the most recent map I could find. It's the one I had last year. So you'll see all of the areas. those area, the base property value still goes to the city, still goes to the other taxing entities. But any increment above that baseline property value is captured, and that is what is directed to the redevelopment area for use on redevelopment area projects. And of course, the goal is that at the end of the tax increment period, then all of the value becomes taxable and it reverts back to the regular taxing entities. They can continue to collect all of it there. So that's what happened with these last two. So we'll be getting some additional general fund property tax revenue from those that expired, as will the county and the school district and all of the other taxing entities. Oh, let me back up. So the sources of project area funding come from the tax increment, but the city also directs some BDOLIS revenue there. There's sometimes interfund transfers from one redevelopment area to the other or from loans from the city to the RDA and inter-agency transfers as well. And then there's always some interest income that comes from that tax increment that's in these areas. So this is the year-over-year budget comparison. Change over 2025 is down 3.4 million or almost 17%. That's the change in the budget from last year. And here you can see the change over last year as well for the areas. You can see Fairmount and Lincoln are zeroed out for this year. So the total amount for all districts in the budget is $15.2 million, which is down 12%. And that's, this is just the district totals. We do use, are proposing to use some BDOLIS revenue in the RDA. There's $250,000 for debt service, union land station purchase, union station land purchase, interfund loan, which I mentioned before, and also the debt service on the Wonder Block and St. Anne's properties. So that is the budget for this year. And happy to answer any questions, or I'm sure Justin Swenson would also be willing to answer any that I can't. Thank you.
Wait, before you leave, so Janine, we included both Fairmount and Lincoln because...
Do you mean why are they still on the list?
Yeah.
So our accounting will track these for another five years, for five years total, and then they won't show up anymore. But we're not going to, unless something changes, and I don't know what that would be, there won't be any more tax increment funding or other revenue coming to those two districts that have expired.
That makes sense. I just want to make sure that's what, my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question for Janine? All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. There's anybody that would like to... Everybody seemed to have left. Anybody would like to speak to the RDA budget?
Chair, not seeing any movement. I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Board Member Ritchie, second by Board Member Graff to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not even going to say it. Any opposed? And...
And with that, I would make a motion that we adopt proposed resolution 2025-11. 11.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Ritchie, second by Vice Chair Hayer, to adopt proposed resolution 2025-11. This is a roll call vote. Board Member Blair?
Aye.
Board Member Chaburka?
Aye.
Board Member Graff?
Aye.
Board Member Myers?
Aye.
Board Member Ritchie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer?
Aye.
Chair White? Aye. That passes. All right.
Chair, I just noticed that, and is it, the proposed resolution number is the same as in the prior meeting? I'm guessing that we have different resolutions by each meeting, right? So this is an RDA, which just happens to be, that we're on the 11th resolution as we are on the other. That's interesting. So, all right.
Wow. Yeah, comments from the...
I made that observation once before, too.
Comments from the executive director?
Nothing else to add. Thank you.
All right. Any comments from board members?
I'm just kind of curious, you know, when those districts drop off of the role and we're no longer collecting TIF, they do fall into an area where they're fully charged property tax. And I'd be interested to see what kind of revenue comes into the city as a result of the property taxes collected for that particular redevelopment area. So I wonder if we might call on CED for a number.
That's part of our annual report for the RDA update, is we detail each RDA and district and CRA and URA and the various names, and we call out specifically how much revenue has been generated in valuation for each district. And then when they fall out, we can look at what the new ongoing revenue is for each district as well. I mean, certainly, some perform higher than others, but...
Yeah, great to connect the dots on that.
Yeah.
Because it's, the goal was to increase our tax-generated revenue on that. Now, it'll be fun to see that. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, it's currently online. We're working on a dashboard to spatially display it, to show where all the districts are, to track performance in real time, et cetera. And then we can help direct you to the link if you need. Looks like you got it. Yep, okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Ritchie, second by Board Member Myers to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
It's going to be Nip and Tuck.
Hmm.
It's not fast, Steve talks.
Yeah. Well, there's like July night.
Yeah.
Although he's... Ready? All right. Good evening and welcome to the Municipal Building Authority of June 10, 2025. Please note that all trustees are present. With that, we have a public hearing, and we invite Steve Burton up to talk about the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
Good evening, trustees and Mr. President. Glenn made sure to tell me, hey, you only get so many opportunities to call the mayor, president, and the council members, trustees. So it's good to be, good to be with you. I get the privilege of presenting the proposed, or going over the proposed Municipal Building Authority budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. And this budget is one that you're familiar with. To give a little bit of backstory, on May 13, administration presented this budget in work session and in the Municipal Building Authority meeting. And since that time, there have been no changes proposed to that budget. What's nice about this budget is it can all fit on one slide. It's nice and simple for guys like me to look at and present on. As you can see, $5,000 was budgeted for financial reporting in the professional and technical line item. And because one of the primary purposes of the MBA is to finance the cost of public projects on behalf of the city, you can see that debt service line is 4.1 million for debt payments for the Wonder Block parking structures. And then you can see the difference there, that $520,000 represents the difference in the debt schedule for this coming year. Happy to, that's what we've got. Happy to hear your questions, if you have any.
All right. Any questions for Steve? Okay. Hi. This, too, is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this, please come up and state your name in three minutes.
Form a line. Chair, I'm not seeing any... Oh, there is a hand. Never mind. I will...
All right.
All right.
All right. We'll go to Heath Sato online.
Hey, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I... Wow, I'm getting feedback. Let me try to do this. I was just wondering in regards to, we were talking about servicing the debt on the parking. Have we worked out how we're doing that, if we're going to have the paid parking or what? That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Chair, now that we, I think we've exhausted the public comment, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Trustee Blair to close a public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
It's going to be Nip and Tuck.
Hmm.
It's not fast, Steve talks.
Yeah. Well, there's like July night.
Yeah.
Although he's... Ready? All right. Good evening and welcome to the Municipal Building Authority of June 10, 2025. Please note that all trustees are present. With that, we have a public hearing, and we invite Steve Burton up to talk about the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
Good evening, trustees and Mr. President. Glenn made sure to tell me, hey, you only get so many opportunities to call the mayor, president, and the council members, trustees. So it's good to be, good to be with you. I get the privilege of presenting the proposed, or going over the proposed Municipal Building Authority budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. And this budget is one that you're familiar with. To give a little bit of backstory, on May 13, administration presented this budget in work session and in the Municipal Building Authority meeting. And since that time, there have been no changes proposed to that budget. What's nice about this budget is it can all fit on one slide. It's nice and simple for guys like me to look at and present on. As you can see, $5,000 was budgeted for financial reporting in the professional and technical line item. And because one of the primary purposes of the MBA is to finance the cost of public projects on behalf of the city, you can see that debt service line is 4.1 million for debt payments for the Wonder Block parking structures. And then you can see the difference there, that $520,000 represents the difference in the debt schedule for this coming year. Happy to, that's what we've got. Happy to hear your questions, if you have any.
All right. Any questions for Steve? Okay. Hi. This, too, is a public hearing. If there's anybody, anyone that would like to speak on this, please come up and state your name in three minutes.
Form a line. Chair, I'm not seeing any... Oh, there is a hand. Never mind. I will...
All right.
All right.
All right. We'll go to Heath Sato online.
Hey, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I... Wow, I'm getting feedback. Let me try to do this. I was just wondering in regards to, we were talking about servicing the debt on the parking. Have we worked out how we're doing that, if we're going to have the paid parking or what? That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Chair, now that we, I think we've exhausted the public comment, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Trustee Blair to close a public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
It's going to be Nip and Tuck.
Hmm.
It's not fast, Steve talks.
Yeah. Well, there's like July night.
Yeah.
Although he's... Ready? All right. Good evening and welcome to the Municipal Building Authority of June 10, 2025. Please note that all trustees are present. With that, we have a public hearing, and we invite Steve Burton up to talk about the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
Good evening, trustees and Mr. President. Glenn made sure to tell me, hey, you only get so many opportunities to call the mayor, president, and the council members, trustees. So it's good to be, good to be with you. I get the privilege of presenting the proposed, or going over the proposed Municipal Building Authority budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. And this budget is one that you're familiar with. To give a little bit of backstory, on May 13, administration presented this budget in work session and in the Municipal Building Authority meeting. And since that time, there have been no changes proposed to that budget. What's nice about this budget is it can all fit on one slide. It's nice and simple for guys like me to look at and present on. As you can see, $5,000 was budgeted for financial reporting in the professional and technical line item. And because one of the primary purposes of the MBA is to finance the cost of public projects on behalf of the city, you can see that debt service line is 4.1 million for debt payments for the Wonder Block parking structures. And then you can see the difference there, that $520,000 represents the difference in the debt schedule for this coming year. Happy to, that's what we've got. Happy to hear your questions, if you have any.
All right. Any questions for Steve? Okay. Hi. This, too, is a public hearing. If there's anybody, anyone that would like to speak on this, please come up and state your name in three minutes.
Form a line. Chair, I'm not seeing any... Oh, there is a hand. Never mind. I will...
All right.
All right.
All right. We'll go to Heath Sato online.
Hey, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I... Wow, I'm getting feedback. Let me try to do this. I was just wondering in regards to, we were talking about servicing the debt on the parking. Have we worked out how we're doing that, if we're going to have the paid parking or what? That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Chair, now that we, I think we've exhausted the public comment, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Trustee Blair to close a public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
It's going to be Nip and Tuck.
All right. We'll go to Heath Sato online.
Hey, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I... Wow, I'm getting feedback. Let me try to do this. I was just wondering in regards to, we were talking about servicing the debt on the parking. Have we worked out how we're doing that, if we're going to have the paid parking or what? That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Chair, now that we, I think we've exhausted the public comment, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Trustee Blair to close a public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
It's going to be Nip and Tuck.
All right. We'll go to Heath Sato online.
Hey, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I... Wow, I'm getting feedback. Let me try to do this. I was just wondering in regards to, we were talking about servicing the debt on the parking. Have we worked out how we're doing that, if we're going to have the paid parking or what? That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Chair, now that we, I think we've exhausted the public comment, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Trustee Blair to close a public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?